I'd like to call to order the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners, Commissioners Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, April 30th, 2025. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, united, invincible, liberty, justice, and You'll see on our agenda, we have the approval of minutes for next week. If there's no discussion on the minutes today, then we will continue to approve them next week. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning. On April 29th, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding consideration of the purchase and lease of real property, RFQ processes, active and pending litigation, grant programs, bond proceeds, and personnel matters. In addition to the Solicitor's Office, the Commissioners were joined by Judge Royce Morris, District Court Administrator Steve Lipphart, Director of Human Services Randy Jaeger, and Budget and Finance Director Chris Davis.
Any questions for Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none. We'll move on to public participation on agenda items only. So this is for agenda items only. Just a reminder, there's a three-minute cap on public participation. So, and we are live streaming. So, public participation for agenda items only. Hearing none. Directors and guests, we'll begin with Dauphin County Conservation District, Robert Kristoff.
Morning Bob.
Good morning.
Morning.
This morning, we have a check presentation to Sean Reed and Sherry Kider Reed with us here today. They own a farm in Jackson Township and the check is compensation for purchase of an agricultural conservation easement. The conservation easement preserves that farm in perpetuity as farmland. It's part of the county farmland preservation program. With preservation of this particular farm, Dauphin County will be at 216 preserved farms totaling 20,694 acres. And Jackson Township, this will be the 33rd preserved farm totaling 2,830 acres. This easement is 100% county funded. The purchase price was $1,750 per acre. That was our cap in 2024. That's 90% of the full easement value. So the Kiders are donating 10% of that, that full easement value to the county program.
That's great. Any comments?
I just want to take a moment and, and thank Sean and Sherry for what they're doing today. This is an ongoing plan by the county to preserve as much land in perpetuity as possible. And Bob, under your leadership, as you mentioned, we're 20,000 acres plus now, which is a remarkable accomplishment here at the county. Can't thank you enough for the work you have done or are doing and will continue to do on behalf of the residents and, and with landowners like the, like the Reeds. This is something we look forward to participating in in the future. As you know, my pet peeve is when the land is gone, it's gone forever. All the times we see the big box stores coming and there's vacant properties next to them, but they'll tear down the trees, tear up the grass and put a parking lot in there. They could have utilized existing structures. This is something we never need to worry about now, thanks to the generosity of the Reeds and could not thank them enough.
Yeah, I echo all of those sentiments. As someone who grew up in rural Indiana on a farm, I appreciate our commitment to preserving that part of Dauphin County's heritage and legacy and certainly respecting our, those who have worked in agriculture, those who've worked on farms and giving the opportunity for often generational farms to be handed down and for, for there to be an opportunity for them to be preserved in this way. Thank you for the work that your office does and identifying the ones that are, you know, are able to access this program and then that we're able to preserve. So, yeah, this is, this is great to see that we're at, you said, 216. That's, that's a lot. And, and the amount of acres is 2,830 just in, is that just in Jackson Township? Wow, that's just in Jackson Township. So, so, so pretty amazing to see, oh, and 20,000, over 20,000 acres throughout Dauphin County. That's, that's amazing. So, thank you for your work on this and thank you to the, to the Reed family for, for being here with us today. Yeah. Would you like to make any comments? No pressure. If you don't want to, we just figured we'd give you the opportunity. Okay. Well, we have a check presentation, so I think we're going to take a picture with the check here. Now I want to invite up Dauphin County Public Safety Director Jeff Enders. And we are going to present some 911 lifesaver awards. And yeah, I'll let you take it from here.
Sure. Again, Commissioners, I just want to thank you. I know we're two weeks post-game for the telecommunicator week, which is when we had this originally slated for. Was to recognize and honor those telecommunications for everything they do, everything they give, and the constant mental abuse that comes with the task and it's that one week every year, we get to say thank you to all of those employees that do that as well as thanking their family members, knowing that when they come home, they are just a little more broken than they were the day before. So it's a lot of stress and a lot of struggle. So today's about highlighting those positive achievements that they have done over the last 12 months. And I could say today's presentation is probably over my last 15 years. It's probably one of my most exciting presentations that we're going to have here because it really brings the importance of a magnitude of things to the table from CPR to the 911 operator to the closure of actually having an impact on someone's life. And, and it shows that. And then the other positive we have here today is, as always, it's always nice to end with a nice fun baby birth. So.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you both.
Yeah. So we're starting with yours, I think.
Could Dan Crum, please come on up? Folks, I was out at EMA 911 a couple of weeks ago to deliver some other certificates, stork pins, et cetera, for the birth of children and some other heroic actions taken on, on the, on our end of the phone line. These individuals who are accepting these calls are talking to people having some of the worst moments of their life, tragedy involving family members or just community members. So they come across and they're the calm, cool, collect voice on the other end of the line when folks are having a terrible day. And the amazing thing to me was I was asking them, I'm here to give you a certificate for this great thing that you did. Tell me about it. And not one of them could remember that specific event from that year that they were being awarded on. And I said, why? Because we get so many calls just like this. I just think about that every day while we're sitting here in a meeting or out eating dinner. Those calls come in and we're still sitting at a meeting like this or out eating dinner. Those individuals, just like our first responders, responding at a moment's notice to assist people during their potentially worst times of their life and handling it in a cool, calm, collect manner. We cannot thank you enough. Dan, I'm going to read a little bit of your bio and a little bit about what occurred here and then I'd like to hear it in your own words if we could. Dan Crum gets the CPR save in attendance and Carl Patton's here, who is the survivor and a retiree from Dauphin County probation. And Jeff is going to touch on the revive four-minute city distribution that's occurring, the AED machines throughout the county. And Mike Kraska, the paramedic, is also present today. So I'm going to ask if both of them could come up and pull seats up next to you. Dan's been with Dauphin County Public Safety for 25 years, currently supervisor on the SEEP platoon. Prior to his employment, he served in the United States Army. Thank you for your service. He's been in public safety for over 30 years, joining the fire service with Colonial Park Fire Company, continuing service with Anderson Creek Volunteer Fire Company in North Carolina while stationed at Fort Bragg, and then the Lingustown Fire Company upon his return to Dauphin County, Pennsylvania. He's held various ranks from lieutenant through fire chief operationally as well as president administratively. Married for 20 years, has three sons, two dogs. For fun, he coaches baseball for Lingustown Baseball Association. Can't tell you how many times Lingustown beat Hershey when I was coaching. Bill Payne is coach. You probably remember that. And he umpires baseball for PIAA, American Legion, and Little League. And in his spare time, like he has any, he enjoys traveling with his family. Again, I want to say thank you, Dan, to you. And Director Enders brought up your family as well because you're here working and when you go home, a lot of times you can't just turn it off when you leave the office. You need to unwind, talk to somebody and, and your family members are there as your, and your peers to, to discuss any tragic situations that you come across, which you do almost daily. Cannot thank you enough. Would you like to comment on, on what occurred?
Yeah. So it was unfortunate, the set of circumstances for the 911 call. I was actually at work, I believe, for a detail. So I wasn't even supposed to be answering the 911 calls, but they were being inundated with calls for services and the detail hadn't started yet. So I actually picked up the phone. And it was just a very fortunate set of circumstances that came into play. Mr. Patton was at a, a health club and the members responded as soon as he had a medical emergency. They picked up the phone, they called 911, they got him off of the treadmill, I believe it was, yes. And I just coached them through the instructions on how to set up CPR, how to set up the AED and start performing the, the functions of CPR. And while this was occurring, it was also very fortunate that a local fire chief was actually on his way to that very same health club. So it was a very quick response on his part to get there and take over the actions, followed very quickly by paramedic Kraska and his team showing up and continuing those CPR and, and AEDs and all the way to the hospital and stuff. So it's not just the 911 dispatching side that we got help started right away. It's also those members in the community that actually responded because a lot of times when we pick up the 911 calls, the callers are hysterical or having a bad day. They had to call us. It takes a few minutes for them to calm down. But in this set of circumstances, the people that called, they were very calm, very collected and responded right away to the instructions and, and helped make a positive impact and a difference in a matter of seconds.
Anything you'd like to add, sir?
Glad he's here.
And Mr. Patton. Oh, good, good.
I, I think the, the importance here is, and I brought one here today, part of the four-minute community, and I don't want to take too much time. This was a village that came together from the zero-minute response of dispatchers to my encounter with Mr. Patton to have a successful resuscitation. I brought an AED today because this is something we started in Dauphin County. Love to have an offline conversation about this, about how we can help out. It's through the Federation and the Peyton Walker Foundation. I actually have one of my own. Anybody in this room can have one. These should be as, just as common in the community as a smoke detector in your house. They do save lives. When I first started in EMS in 1986, resuscitation was less than 1% that they walked out of the hospital. Today, we're nearly at 30%. If a patient gets shocked, 30% chance of walking out of the hospital. That is an impact. Beyond policing, beyond, beyond the fire service, this machine right here has more of an impact than anything in public safety. So I just, in fact, even Planet Fitness now put one of these machines in all their, their facilities. And we're fortunate to have Mr. Patton with us.
Thank you for kindness and specialism you showed here over the years. It lasted much longer than me as an individual from the days that started. You treated everybody the same. Didn't realize that was you until right now, when you came on the reading list and looking up.
Many years.
Well, thank you Commissioners and to Director Enders for inviting me here today. September, sure.
Thanks.
September 19th, 2024 started off as a very normal day for me, which included a workout at Planet Fitness, a daily cardio workout. Sometime shortly before 9:00 AM, I collapsed.
Sometime shortly before 9:00 AM, I collapsed on a machine without warning. And another patron at the gym saw me go down, came over, saw I was unresponsive and not breathing, yelled for help. Staff came over, started administering CPR, and that's when Dan got involved. They called, the other staff person called the 911 center. Dan answered the phone, thankfully, assessed the situation, dispatched the appropriate vehicles that were needed to tend to me. And more importantly, he stayed on the phone the entire time while the staff people and the patrons were performing CPR to make sure it was done correctly and according to protocol. That was the first step in my recovery. Because of Dan's swift and decisive actions, he mentioned that the chief of fire in Swedower Township was involved. And he was. It's a person by name of Michael Iverston. You probably know. Mike is the chief for fire and emergency services in Swedower Township. And coincidentally, when Dan dispatched the call, Mike was on his way to work at the Swedower Township Municipal Building, heard the call, drove directly to Planet Fitness. He was only a few blocks away, drove to Planet Fitness in his emergency vehicle with an AED, came in, hooked me up to the AED, shocked me multiple times, and my heart started to beat. So those few minutes, thankfully to Dan for getting the call out and for where Mike was in proximity to Planet Fitness, really was the first steps in saving my life. Then Mike Kraska came with his folks, and Mike administered some emergency medication and helped stabilize me and get me ready to transport down to Harrisburg Hospital, which I was there for two weeks, spent four days in intensive care, had three separate heart procedures performed, all to fix the problem I had. Shortly after I was released from the hospital, I met with my cardiologist. And when he walked in the room, he said, Jeff, he said, I'm so glad to see you. And I said, Doctor, I'm so glad to see you too. And he said, I hope you understand that you're very fortunate that most people don't survive, or many people don't survive, but you survive. And he said, all your guardian angels were in line, all your stars were in line, and your guardian angel was on your shoulder. And that really said something to me. And I believe to this day that my survival and recovery were driven by three factors. The first is divine intervention. I had the good Lord looking after me when this happened. The second is the work started with Dan and the emergency services folks who dispatched the call and provided service with Mike and Mike and getting me transported to the hospital as quick as they did. And the third was the medical care I received at Harrisburg Hospital for two weeks. It was awesome care by the doctors, nurses, and support staff that helped bring me along where I am today. So I'm also grateful to the commissioners for your continued help and support in the advancement of emergency services here at Dolphin County. You provide a lot of assistance to local municipalities and to different organizations, and you have for a long time. And Commissioner, I was thinking about you the other day, and I thought, you know, you have safety and security in your blood because you started as an insecurity before you became commissioner. So I know that's something that's very dear and dear to you from my experience here in Dolphin County. So I am very grateful and thankful to be here. I'm thankful for what Dan did. I'm here humbled to help honor him for the work that he did as a dispatcher. And I'm sure that the people, the men and women of the Public Safety Department have benefited from your support and the work that is done. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, Dan, for, obviously, I've been in our 911 center. And I think the, you know, the challenge it is with, you know, you're looking at six screens and you're, you know, you've got a lot going through your head as you're trying to take in information, what's happening, figure out how to assess it, what, you know, where to send people, you know, how to help. You acting in such a professional way, in such a way that helped those individuals provide lifesaving care. It clearly had a massive impact. And not just on, you know, the life that you saved, that you've helped, you know, and that, but also, I think, just on the pride that we have in those who, you know, do public safety here in our county. And so thank you for being a part of that. It's something that I'm personally proud of, and I know Commissioner Priest shares my pride in that. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close this up with reading the lifesaver award certificate. Dolphin County 911 Department of Public Safety and the Board of Commissioners is proud to present a lifesaver pin for providing lifesaving CPR and airway instructions on September 19th, 2024. And this is presented to Daniel Crum. Do a photo? Photo now or just now?
Thank you, Mike. All right, I believe next up we have Dan Gross.
Simon Dan.
Dan, how are you today?
Good, thank you.
Good. I heard that you started as a volunteer firefighter at the age of 14.
I did, yeah, back in Halifax, running with Jeff Enders here.
Yeah, can you talk a little bit about that? I mean, obviously, we're seeing the challenge of volunteerism across the county and fire departments and other areas, you know, drop. And share a little bit about what drew you to want to do that? And kind of maybe some of the ways it's been rewarding, even when you were a young person doing that work, preparing?
So I started, like you said, back when I was 14. My neighbor actually was the fire chief at the time. So he and his wife both ran with the fire department, kind of got involved through there and saw what it was all about and kind of intrigued me. So I ended up going in and been doing it ever since. I mean, helping people out is exciting, it's rewarding.
Yeah, and that's in Halifax, correct?
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
Great, you have a family, you have, let's see here, it says you enjoy spending time helping others. Just tell us a little bit about yourself. Tell us a little bit about, you know, who you are, what drew you to become a firefighter? And just a little bit about who you are. Grew up in Dolphin County?
Grew up in Dolphin County, been there up in Halifax all my life. I mean, the fire department, then started running with EMS, got my EMT. Just been doing that and then found out about the job opening at 911 Center. Ended up getting in there, it was just right down my alley, enjoyed the public service there, so.
Yeah, so tell us a little bit about, it says that you were able to help with a, is it a baby delivery? Is that what it was, assisting that? Talk a little bit about what that was like.
I had been there for less than a year.
Okay.
And of course, one of the craziest calls you get is a baby delivery.
Yeah.
So I answered the phone and they're saying about how, I think it was the husband, I believe, that had called originally. His wife was pregnant and a baby was coming. And so I went through the motions as were instructed, give all the instructions to get ready, to get towels ready. I believe it was just after I hung up the phone, EMS had arrived there. They ended up delivering the baby.
Wow.
It was exciting.
That is exciting, such a cool, I mean, scary, but also, I mean, as a father of three, I mean, I couldn't imagine going through that myself. But at the same time, like, must have been very comforting to hear your voice on the other end, probably providing calm and, you know, here's the steps and here's the ways that you can prepare for that. Very, very cool. Anything you have to add, Commissioner?
Yeah, I think it's fitting that he mentioned that he's from Halifax and started running the fire department with Director Enders. I also see on here that you learned the job from Tom Potiker.
Oh, yes, yes.
I was just out there within the past two weeks presenting proclamation for his retirement. And the pipeline is long, especially from the folks in the Northern End. And the amount of effort and time they've put into our emergency services is remarkable. And it's great to have you as a member of the team and look forward to decades of service from you, not just in the volunteer fire area, but also as a county employee. Cannot thank you enough, sir.
Thank you.
Director Enders, anything to add?
No, I mean, I think, you know, it's different from our perspective. And I say our perspective, I mean, sitting outside, Dan underscores, I went through the instructions, I helped Justin Douglas, it wasn't that big a deal. But I think all three of us as fathers sitting here know, when it is your deal.
Yeah.
It's not quite so calm and comforting. So, you know, every employee we have underscores their value when it comes to those situations. Like, relax, this is going to be okay. Yeah, it's easy for you, guy on the phone, not me the one holding the baby. So, yeah, I just think it underscores that tremendously. And I think that he said for all our staff that they all feel the same way. Like, as Mike alluded to before, most of them forget by the end of the day what they did in the day. And they go, yeah, I delivered two babies, it's not that big a deal. Well, not for you, but for that family or for Mr. Patton, who was the CPR safe. You have a tremendous impact on people's lives on every phone call you take. And sometimes that gets missed.
Definitely, definitely. Thank you for your service to the county. And we have a recognition award here. I'll go ahead and read it. Dolphin County 911 Department of Public Safety is proud to present the Exemplary Service Award for Actions Taken After the Birth of a Child. Great aftercare support instructions to Daniel Gross.
Come to you. This is a stork?
So again, in conclusion, to closing this out again, I thank you guys for honoring all the telecommunications and what they continue to do every day, day in and day out, 24 hours a day. But again, I do want to step back to Paramedic Kraska's acknowledgement of the Avive AED program that are out there and available for residents. They can go online, go to the website, it's on the Health Services Federation website. It should be on the county EMA site that these AED machines are available. Go through some training, get some certification, and, you know, you too can be part of the community and part of that thing that saves a life. So, and that's a huge thing, so I thank you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Director Enders. All right, at this time, we will move on to Human Resources, Ms. Rosinski.
Today, I'm just going to be requesting a vote on item number 37 of the personnel packet.
Is there any reason potentially to vote on nine through 12, just for expedience of that process? Or no, those are requests to fill, never mind, never mind.
I'll make a motion to approve item 37.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any questions for, anything else?
Thank you.
All right, Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Davis.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I have no changes to the purchase order packet that was distributed yesterday. I'll be ready for your vote approval next week. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Davis. Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning, commissioners. There are only two matters requiring board action today. A legal professional services agreement with Saxton and Stump and ratification of a special events insurance coverage for Parks and Recreation. There are also four items under former business. At this point, given how long this has gone on, I'm recommending simply removing the indemnity agreement with the church next door until we can get further clarity as to their intentions. I also just wanted to take a moment and say that, of course, I think we all realize it's been quite a difficult period for the county. And despite some of the disruption and scrutiny I know we are all facing as county employees, I thought it was more important than ever to regularly highlight some of the great work our employees are doing on behalf of the county's residents. In that spirit, I wanted to commend everyone who contributed to Wildwood Park's 25th Annual Wetlands Festival this past weekend. Wildwood Park has a new partner, Getting Wet Scuba, who helped remove nearly 200 pounds of trash and debris from Paxton Creek and Wildwood Lake tributaries. We're really appreciative of the volunteers and everyone who braved the rain, weeds, and water to make the cleanup a success. That concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Any questions, Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none, Solicitor's report, Mr. Owen.
Thank you, Commissioner. There are only two matters requiring board action. Both have been reviewed and approved for action by the Solicitor's Office.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Owens?
No.
All right, we have a training packet before us, four items. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the training packet.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any conversation, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now move on to matters requiring board action. We have two matters before us. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of these two items.
I'll make a motion to approve items one and two.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Former business, I'll ask, at the Chief Clerk's recommendation, that we remove item one. Do I have a motion for removing item one? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Items two and three, I would like to make a motion that we table these further. Do I have a second?
Just for, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
For clarification purposes, this work has already been started. So at some point soon, we're going to have to make a formal decision on these items.
Understood. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries to continue to table items two and three. We have item four before us.
I'll make a motion to approve item number four.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yes, this 299,000 amount for ERAP, Emergency Rental Assistance State Funds, is determined to be a proper allocation by Randy Jaeger from Human Services. So I remain in support of that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion does not carry. Commissioners comments? Commissioner Priest.
Tech port, it was brought up last week. I want to let everyone know that we've met with various stakeholders, and we are putting a plan of action into place. We're on a very tight timeline as the closing date is May 16th, and that is looming ahead of us. And I want to thank the Solicitor, Matt Owens, as well as Human Services Director Randy Jaeger, and our Chief of Staff, Eric Haggerty, and other staff who are working with the prospective contractors to get this project moving. And that's all I have under my report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. For my commissioner comments today, I just simply want to share about a letter that came across my desk. While reviewing documents in response to an unrelated litigation request, our team came across a letter submitted in 2012 by the accounting firm then known as Brown, Schultz, Sheridan, and Fritz. The letter, which was stamped as received by the Solicitor's Office in October of that year, raises serious allegations of potential illegal activity. Until now, this letter was never disclosed publicly. I do not know who, if anyone, was made aware of it at the time or whether any investigation was ever initiated. was ever initiated. The discovery adds further concern to an already troubling pattern of unethical behavior and a lack of transparency from past leadership. It reinforces why I have made it a priority to shine a light on past practices and work to rebuild public trust in our county government. At the recommendation of our Solicitor, the letter has been referred to the appropriate law enforcement agencies for review. With that context, I'm going to read the letter in full for the public. The letter's dated October 19th, 2012, says it's delivered via certified mail, return receipt requested. It says it is addressed to is Jeff Haste, Mike Priest, George Hartwick III. Gentlemen, our Camp Hill CPA firm serves many local municipal clients throughout central Pennsylvania, including four municipalities in Dauphin County. Recently, one of those Dauphin County clients informed us of some disturbing activity being conducted by Michael Musser and an accounting firm he represents, Zelenkovsky Axlerod LLC. We have been advised that Mr. Musser approached the township manager and informed him that if his township wished to continue receiving Dauphin County gaming grants, the township would need to terminate our firm and engage Zelenkovsky Axlerod as their auditors. We have been informed Mr. Musser is contracted by Zelenkovsky Axlerod to develop business for them and receives a fee for doing so. This would suggest Mr. Musser is using his position of influence granted to him by the commissioners to pursue personal gains using county funds as leverage to assist his client, Zelenkovsky Axlerod, to acquire new business. We realize that the accounting profession can be quite competitive, but these activities raise questions regarding ethical behavior and compliance with professional standards. We appreciate that Mr. Musser may have been great assistance to you with your own political campaigns and may be a personal friend as well. We understand he has been appointed to the Dauphin County Gaming Advisory Committee, which decides where the county's share of gaming monies will be distributed. We suspect this similar activity by Mr. Musser has impacted our relationship with at least one other Dauphin County client. We believe our reputation and livelihood are being unfairly damaged by Mr. Musser's actions. We respectfully request that the county commissioners act immediately to investigate these allegations and put a halt to them if true. Based upon the advice of our own professional advisors, we have determined that we have a professional responsibility to notify our Dauphin County clients that participating in the activities described above may be illegal, and that the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants Ethics Rules may be being violated. We trust that you were unaware of these activities and will take the appropriate actions to stop them respectfully. And then signed, Brown, Schultz, Sheridan, and Fritz. This letter speaks for itself, and it's deeply troubling. As a commissioner, I believe the people of Dauphin County have a right to know what has been hidden, ignored, or swept aside. Transparency is not optional. It is the foundation of good government. I will continue working to expose wrongdoing, demand accountability, and ensure that this government operates with integrity for our residents, the integrity they deserve. We cannot change the past, but we can confront it and make sure it never happens again. I continue to urge anyone with relevant information about these or other concerning activities to reach out to the county or law enforcement. And that concludes my Commissioner comments.
And my response to that is, these allegations contained in the letter from 13 years ago are of such a nature that our Chief Clerk's Office deemed it necessary to provide this letter to District Attorney Charter's office, which Commissioner Douglas and I both agreed was the appropriate action to take. I do not recall any internal or external investigations ever having been conducted, nor do I recall a date when I was ever provided this particular letter by staff. I want to stress that, at this time, these are allegations only. Let me repeat, they're allegations only. The letter was placed in the possession of the District Attorney's Office. I will not have any further comment that could impact any potential ongoing investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. We'll now move on to public participation. I believe I'll need a sheet for that, because I think people sign up in advance. Just a reminder, we have a three-minute cap, and we are live streaming. Okay. All right, we'll begin with Jean Stilp. Yep.
Good morning, Jean. As a reminder to everyone during public comment, please state your name for the record.
Thank you, commissioners. I would also say about that referral to Charter.
Good morning, could you please state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Jean Stilp, Fisher Creek Valley. A reference to Mr. Charter should also might be considered giving to the Attorney General, also because it involves state gaming funds. So, just a thought. This is April 30th, I've been coming here since January and delivering information against the restart of Three Mile Island, even taking the county to court. It starts to remind me of the time in grade school that we had to go to show and tell. One time was very memorable for me, the time we had to tell the class about my sister and brothers and our relatives. I told them my mother and my mother's relatives, and also how my father was a co-joined twin. Yes, he had, he and his brother Bob, they were only, they were really close. So I told the class that I had Uncle Bob on my father's side. My point is that I want to say that it's all in the perspective you take. Folks may, maybe for the restart because of jobs, those jobs being less than 1/10th or 1% of the region. The question is, is that enough for the people of the county? Folks here have just received a tax increase. Commissioners may say their hands are tied, they can get nothing else out of the two biggest corporations in the US, two big corporations in the US. Team News this morning said that burglars have stole all the toilets from a police station in New Jersey. Amazing. Police say they have no clues who did it, and the police say they have nothing to go on. Does the county government here have something to go on? Yes, you do. Here, the commissioners have something to go on. Two of the biggest corporations in the country want an emergency plan from the county. People in this room, now the residents of the county, take all the risk. What are they getting from them? This county holds all the high cards, should demand more. A lot of the, excuse me, a lot more. What about $50 million or $100 million a year for the county to participate in the emergency plan? Health taxpayers in the county that just got their taxes raised, go on the attack. If they don't give big money, no plan. Whoops, what was they thinking about, an actual negotiating position representing for the taxpayers? Wake up, Jean, that's not gonna happen. Now, back to my realistic perspective. Emergency plans, emergency plans are a tale of wonderful-looking papers and tabletop exercises that don't work in the real world. How do you safely evacuate 11 hospitals in the region, tens of thousands of students, and nursery schools, and nursing homes? Tell me how you even evacuate one, emergency medical with 500 beds. We are not going back. No restart of TMI Unit 1, never. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stilp. Next up, we have Dr. Kevin Dolphin.
How you guys doing today?
Morning, Kev.
All right. Good morning. I don't know how I'm gonna get all this in three minutes, but I want to thank you guys for.
Excuse me, could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Dr. Kevin Dolphin, and I'm the founder of Breaking the Chains. I am also the Executive Director of the Breaking the Chains Community Resource Center. So now, again, again, I want to thank the commissioners for having me. I also want to send my prayers and concerns out to Commissioner Hartwick and his family as well. Commissioner Douglas, this is directed towards you. So, me being as a man of understanding and knowing the proper time of when and where to say things, I was hesitant about bringing this matter before, you know, the public. But after requesting a much-needed follow-up meeting to our first short meeting that we had a couple of months ago, and it seeming as if you acted as if it wasn't urgent enough or it didn't matter, I was forced to bring it here today. As an individual who has served our community nonstop for the past decade and has helped hundreds of thousands of men, women, children, at-risk youth, and reentrants nationwide, I recognize that you still have yet to come up to the Breaking the Chains Community Resource Center and see the type of work that I do firsthand, instead of maybe getting some second-hand information that might be tainted when it comes to me. Most of the people, a lot of people in this crowd has witnessed my work firsthand, even Commissioner Priest. I want to ask, have you come out and witnessed my work firsthand since you've been the Commissioner? And I've invited you out a couple of times. But in an email I get from you a couple of days ago, last week, you tell me that you don't support Breaking the Chains or my program. Now, for anyone that knows my program, anyone that has seen my work, anyone that knows me, would ask the question, why doesn't Commissioner Douglas support Dr. Dolphin and his program and the things that he does around the city? So, I have documentation since 2015. Any documentation that you need, numbers, I have them. But I feel as though I'm being stuck in the middle of whatever feud you have going on with Commissioner Hartwick. And you are trying to make an example out of one of the greatest success stories, which is me, he has helped to create. See, back in 2015, when I first came home, I didn't know Commissioner Hartwick, but he sat down and he had a meeting with me, and he got to know me, and he seen the potential in me, and he gave me a chance. This is in 2015. Commissioner Hartwick aided my organization in helping to create a safer community in Stilton, Middletown, Susquehanna, CD, and other places. I'm getting ready to wrap up. Since 2015 until this very day, in his absence, Commissioner Hartwick's work still continues to assist me with the work that he's helped open the doors for. I've done so many things in the city of Harrisburg and Stilton and all these other places, and people know about it, but yet and still, you send me an email and say that you don't support Breaking the Chains and Dr. Kevin Dolphin, and you've never really sat down with me? My heart and soul is in this community. You don't support the Gatekeepers Breakfast Program, which as of today, we have served 5,642 breakfast bags to youth that walk up and down the cam curtain corridor, which is from.
Excuse me, sir.
Which is from Sixon. I'm getting ready to stop, sir, I'm getting ready to stop. But I didn't want to bring this before, but I was forced. But we, without any support from Commissioner Douglas, we've serviced over 276 reentrant family members since January. We serviced 21 youth going to school this morning, when they arrive at school late. I'm getting ready to wrap it up now. You don't support Breaking the Chains emotional support cognitive development programs that helps create a safer community and cuts down the recidivism rate? You told me that you don't support that. I wanted to meet with you, everyone could see this right here.
Excuse me, sir, everyone is entitled to three minutes.
I'm getting ready to stop. This is, this right here is a guide to help individuals when they get out of prison. It's never been offered at Dauphin County Prison. I'm a success story. If you know me, I've been home from prison 10 years, and I've helped hundreds of thousands of inmates, and this is a success story right here to help them. And anybody that wants one of these guides, you can see me afterwards. But I don't understand anyone that.
Excuse me, sir, you're well over three minutes.
Why you don't support Breaking the Chains. Thank you, sir, and I apologize. I apologize.
You can also, for anyone, if you feel like you need more than three minutes, you can also submit, for the record, in writing, any comments you would like included in meeting minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Dolphin, for your passion and commitment to serve the community. Next up, Tom Connolly.
Good morning, Tom. Good morning, everyone, Tom Connolly, 345 North Harrisburg Street, Swatira Township. A couple of things today. On the Public Safety Award, it was great to hear that Mike Iverson, our Fire Chief, was involved. That was not the only time Mike Iverson responded, before he got to work or after he got to work. Incredible results, saving a life, and congratulations to those that were awarded today. On the tech port, I'm very interested in that. It's in Swatira Township. I was told through an intermediary, the state rep, that there were gonna be talks and plans, and that the township would be kept up to date on this going on a year. So, I know Commissioner Hartwick isn't here, that was his oversight, and I also know that the two commissioners are doing more work than you had to do before, because you're, two are doing the work of three, so I commend you for that. And any oversights that you took from Commissioner Hartwick probably just happened in the last couple of weeks due to his absence, so I understand there's a period of time that'll be needed to catch up. But on the letter, let's be clear, that letter from 12 is an everyday occurrence. There are people all over this county that know about the corruption that comes out of this building. And it sounds like now it is tainted everything. I think we need to look at the boards, who disperses the money. From 2012 till now, until recently, we had Mike Musser in charge of that board. I've said here, I believe he was in charge of this board for years. There's something wrong. And I don't care who it is, whether it's staff, I know lots of good people that work for the county, and I see lots of great works that this county does. But it is under a cloud of corruption, and you need a deep clean right now. Any money that's given out by the gaming board from this point on is tainted, it's been tainted for all these years. There's pay-to-play. Let's be honest, there is pay-to-play in this county. I'm sure it's in jobs, I'm sure it's people sitting in this room. But I'm gonna read something here, and I'm gonna try to, I will cut off right at the three minutes, because I can make this available publicly. But this is from seven years ago, seven years ago, and I'm gonna go fast. As the President of the Board of Commissioners in Swatira Township, I personally made one request to State Representative Tom Mahaffey. It was to sponsor a request for $170,000 from the millions Mike Musser divides up from the Hollywood Casino Gaming Grant Funds. We averaged over $200,000 a year in Swatira Township when John Payne was the state rep. We were told by Tom Mahaffey's campaign consultant, Mike Musser, and his politically-appointed gaming board, we did not need a K-9 program in Swatira Township. We have 30,000 residents, and that's important to our police department, we didn't need it, to protect our citizens and our police officers, did not need it. They gave us $13,000 that year because I, a Democrat, was appointed to the board. This goes on to basically say, Mike Mahaffey said he had no influence over Mike Musser. That seems to be a big lie now that it's election time. Tom Mahaffey's campaign mail was coming from Mike Musser's address. This goes into state reps and other people. The building needs to be wiped clean.
Excuse me, sir.
Get rid of anybody you need to get rid of, start over. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Connolly. Thank you. I have no one else on my list here. Is there anyone else for public comment? Again, three-minute time cap, and we are being livestreamed.
Morning, Councilman.
I don't know if you can hear me, 1212, there we go. Ralph Rodriguez, 19th Street, Harrisburg. So thank you, Mr. Commissioners, for being here today and allowing the public to speak to you in this forum. My comments today are in line with the public safety acknowledgements given today. I'd like to thank the county's UPMC team, led by Mr. Barry Albertson, for our first All You Can UPMC Junior EMT Leadership Class. For the past three weeks, the All You Can Leadership Academy, the one and only True Leadership Academy in Dauphin County, has met at the UPMC Educational Spaces in Le Moine for comprehensive courses on topics such as bleed-out prevention, Narcan application, how to move an injured body on scene, and so much more. This is a brand-new initiative we can scale in partnership with UPMC. The same students are also certified in CPR, AED through the Peyton Walker Foundation, so to hear the testimony of how these services saved a life in today's session is a testament to how important the work we are doing here at All You Can Incorporated. As Dauphin County providers, we work with drug and alcohol to provide prevention services to at-risk youth in the area. More recently, on a weekly basis, we work with the Dauphin County Prohibition Juveniles at the NRC. Please understand, I served juvenile life in a placement facility from nine years of age to 17 and a half. I lost my mom, my dad, grandparents, and just last year, my nephew was murdered here on 18th Street at the age of 18 in Harrisburg. So yes, the work is not only personal for me, but necessary to ensure we can prevent juveniles from losing their lives at an all-time high in Dauphin County. Ms. Randy Jaeger, thank you for all the work as a Human Service Director. She's an amazing. She's an amazing woman and truly does a ton for our county. Thank you to all three Commissioners, County Solicitor, Chief of Staff, the entire team here at Dauphin County. For me, as what I do, I overstand the importance of your jobs and the difficulties that may arise on a daily basis. Just the other week, I had to personally travel 12 hours to obtain a mandatory certificate required to do my work and I would do that again and again with no problem. Commissioner Douglas, thank you for having Miss Wurt reach out to schedule our introduction. I highly anticipate how All You Can Inc. can better assist the families in Dauphin County. Also, thank you for shining a light on wrongdoings here in our county. I know some of your background and what I found we have in common is we are God-fearing men that care a lot. Commissioner Priest, thank you once again for always being available and your kind words stated on the record last week. Your partnership means the world and your friendship is truly appreciated. I look forward to working closely, unified for a better, cleaner, wonderful Dauphin County. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Robert Williams, lifelong resident of Dauphin County. I'm here to let the Commissioners know about some egregious actions that happened to me at Dauphin County Courthouse. My civil and constitutional rights were violated. I was there on February 24th to file a complaint against Assistant District Attorney Mike Faribella. And when I tried, attempted, I asked him, could I file a complaint? He pushed my motions and my preservation letter out of the window and told me to get out the District Attorney's Office. I told him I would not leave. He then said he would call the deputies. I told him, that's fine, I will record everything for my safety and documentation. He then threatened me with a felony if I recorded in the District Attorney's Office, so I left. I went to the clerk of court, I let them know that he wouldn't accept my certificate of service, went home, looked up the law, ate a sandwich, came back, asked for his supervisor. The clerk told me his supervisor was at lunch. I said, I will wait for his lunch to be over. I sat on the bench peacefully. Five sheriff's deputies entered the DA's lobby. They told me to leave. I explained to them I was there under a constitutionally protected right to file a grievance. They still told me to leave. I asked for Sergeant Lloyd, supervisor. He told me, he is the supervisor. I told him, he has someone over him. He told me, he was as high as I would get. They went and got a supervisor named Michelle Avery. She spoke to me. She, I asked her, was she Mike Faribella's supervisor? She said, no. I told her she couldn't help me. I peacefully sat down on the bench. Lloyd sat next to me on the bench, said, you better leave or I'm gonna take your ass down. I got up, pulled out my phone, I said, I'm gonna start recording this interaction. He attacked me. All of this is on the surveillance footage inside of the lobby. I requested the footage from Public Safety. They told me that they destroyed it after 30 days. I have that in emails. I also have testimony from my, from my preliminary hearing where Attorney Mike Faribello admits that he threatened me with a felony to get me to leave, which I was conducting my constitutional right to file a grievance. Also, District Attorney Charter and these other attorneys have conspired to maliciously prosecute me. I know this for a fact. I have it in documentation and I have it in audio recordings. Also, this incident happened, I know they had access to the surveillance footage and I know this due to what happened with Commissioner Hartwick. They looked at the surveillance footage immediately, saw that he damaged the vehicle. So that told me that they had access to look at this surveillance footage that showed Sergeant Lloyd attacking me in the District Attorney's Office and they didn't, I don't know if they looked at it or not, but CID, which I put in an internal investigation of, request, CID contacted me on the 28th of February. I haven't heard one word since then and they're under the District Attorney Charter and it needs to be an outside investigation. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Morning, Louis.
Morning, Mr. Buss.
Testing. My name is Buss, Louis Buss from Harrisburg. I want to thank the Commissioners again. I'm here to, to show you how important you are. I come in here every week to show you how important you are. We need you in Harrisburg. The Police Academy, the Fire Academy produces individuals like our rescue teams. We want to overwhelm our population with that type of knowledge, that type of consciousness, so our residents are more valuable, so they know how to save lives. I've been a lifeguard pretty much all my life, so we apply constantly when we're anywhere and that's what kind of citizenry that we try to develop. We try to develop people that care, have a conscience about other people and how they are. I feel heart-stroking, I mean stricken when people are murdered in the streets. That's not good. We want to make sure our population is conscientious, are, are, have humanistic behaviors, understand that I see you in me and you should see me in you or something like that, so that we all can understand that we need to bridge the gaps. We need to fix our Walnut Street Bridge. We need to make sure those things are done so we can stay connected and we know we're working on bridging the gap between the poor and the affluent. We have to work on these things. As a leader, this is what I bring to the table. All we could, things that Rodriguez are doing, they need to be enhanced and bolstered. He needs a team. I support him. I support Breaking the Chains because we have to have a narrative that's good for African-American men. We have to make sure that people know that we're dynamic, that we're here to help. This is our community. This is my country. I am not a immigrant. I was born right in Harrisburg Hospital. This is my indigenous zone. I, I get it, but we have to put forth a narrative that is respectful and is, and it's enlightening. You know, we want to make sure that we educate our people to who and what we are. So I'm here to say that you're important, I'm important, everybody's important, and we need to work together. We need to bridge the gaps. We need to make sure our river is clean. We need to make sure our food is good for our people and we're educated. That's what it's all about. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Buss. Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. I'll make a motion for adjournment. So move, or second. Thank you. Adjourn.[1794.62]